Okay. On behalf of the school board, call this meeting to order. Jenny, take roll call.
Okay. Ms. Neve?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Here.
Ms. Gorst?
Here.
Mrs. Steiner?
Here.
Mr. Yekitis?
Here.
Let the records show that Mrs. Bohan and Dr. Schuman are absent.
And we will start with pledge allegiance. Jackson? Lead us please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first action item is the approval of the regular board meetings minutes from June 8.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing done, take roll.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neve?
Yes.
Mr. Neve?
Yes. And next action item is the approval of the accounts from the month of June.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, take roll call.
Okay. Ms. Gorst?
Any discussion, excuse me, any discussion?
Um, yes, would it be possible in the reports that list out the, um, the accounts to get the name of each of those accounts so we know which accounts they are?
Kathy, which document are you looking at?
That would be, um, the operating balance to general ledger reconciliation worksheet.
There's only one account there.
The different funds, I'd like to know what the different funds are.
Like a description of, um...
A description of the funds.
Of the funds, right, okay, yeah, like for example, Fund 10 is the main operating fund, you know, Fund 27, special education, stuff like that is what you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And then my other question is, sometimes it's really difficult to go through the reconciliation because it's by when the checks come in, and I understand that, but is there any way that it could be for the board to review more quickly that it could be sorted by fund?
Is Pat here?
Pat's not here.
Pat's not here, okay.
No, but I'm jotting that down and we can get back to you on that Kathy.
I appreciate that because I think it would take a lot less time to go through it that way.
Mm-hmm. Any other discussion? Comments? Okay, I won't take roll.
Okay. Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neve?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Okay, we have no recognitions, but communications?
We did not receive any communications from the public.
No communications from the public? Okay, then I won't.
There's no correspondence to me.
Read that. Superintendent report.
Yes, for the superintendent report, board members will note a seclusion restraint report that's in, that is in board docs. School districts are required by state statute to annually report the number of seclusion restraints that have occurred within their schools, and the school district has traditionally reported out to the board on this during the month of July or August. There's an October 1 deadline to report to the Board of Education and thereafter the report is submitted to the state. So I just wanted to give a little bit of that background related to what this report is, and if you take a look at it, you'll see that it is broken out by, and this falls in line with what the data points that are outlined per state statute, the number of seclusions versus restraints that have occurred by building and then as well the total number of students that are involved with that. So you'll see the first elementary school building listed, for example, there were seven seclusions, three restraints, that was all, you know, from one result of just, that was associated with just one single student. And below then you'll see some totals in then that it's also outlined by students who are identified for special education versus those that are not. So just I wanted to provide a little bit more background related to what this report is. You can see some descriptions about the state statute that are included at the bottom of the document as well. Any questions?
Are we required to report school incursions?
Um, not, not a requirement, could you define or describe what you mean by a school incursion Kathy?
Where we have someone who comes into the school who is not a registered student or who's not supposed to be there for the purposes of disrupting or creating a potential harmful incident?
We have incident reports that we fill out based upon recommended documents from the Office of School Safety with the DOJ that we keep on file and we communicate with law Those involve a number of different situations. Example that you're speaking of, we haven't had occur or haven't had something of that nature to have to report. The incidents that we tend to be involved with relate to school threats, you know, if we have a student that has been found to have something on social media or has maybe said something to another student in a classroom situation and we complete a threat assessment and work with law enforcement, that's an example of something that we would do an internal report on.
Is this something that, um, that you report out to the board so that we know that how many?
We have a process later in the fall where we do our safety drills and do a report out to the board, and that would probably be a time that something along the lines what you're referring to could be, could be addressed.
That kind of makes sense.
All right. Any, any else, other questions?
We have the investments, schedule.
Yeah.
Anything to report there? Nothing there?
No.
Okay. Then next is the acceptance of gifts, which we have a lot, which we're grateful for. So we'll be asking for acceptance of equipment rental valued at $250 from Pancrat's Trucking LLC, equipment transport valued at $840 from Farmway Transport, Inc., Health Occupation Services of America, HOSA, $700 Forward Bank, and $500 Marshfield Area Chamber Foundation, $3,000 from the Marshfield Area Chamber Foundation for the FBLA National Conference, $20 from Michelle Gorky for the Janice Hansen Memorial, $1,021.34 from Jolene and Chris Sternwise for bus upgrades for girls softball, boys' basketball program, $200 Wheeler Chevrolet GMC, $200 from the escape room, and Marshfield FFA, $3,310.85 from the FFA alumni, silent auction items totaling $1,780, 225 from Chili Implement, 200 from Power Pack, 200 from Hewitt's Meat, 200 from Melody's Gardens, 250 from Close Excavating, $220 from Rail Transport, $250 from Mark and Sean Z, $125 from Wheeler's, and $110 from Nasonville Dairy. What is your...
Accept with great thanks.
Second.
Motion and a second?
I heard two.
Kathy?
Kathy?
Give the second, yeah.
All right. Take roll. Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neve?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is finance committee, they did not meet. Then we go to employee relations.
Did not meet.
And they did not meet, so we are now to facility, safety, and transportation, and because Mark missed the meeting last time, I have to report, so passing the gavel to Mark. Let's see here, to my minutes. Okay, last meeting, we met on June 22. It was present myself and Mrs. Kathy, Ms. Kathy Gorst. We reviewed the old business, update was provided on summer projects taking place at each of the buildings. Long-range facility study update, concepts discussed at the most recent session were presented for feedback and discussion with high school administration. Committee will convene again in July. Administration continues to meet with Bray on a weekly basis. New business was school forest use. Use of the school forest outside of educational or recreational use was discussed. As for the next steps, administration will meet with the school forest coordinator to gather additional information regarding these types of requests. Updates will be brought back to the future meeting, back to a future meeting if there is interest in moving forward. Also then, we discussed use of Hiding Stadium, video board for marketing and advertising. The concept of using the video board for marketing and advertising was proposed to the committee. Revenue would be used for ongoing maintenance operations for the athletic complex. Committee consented for the concept to move forward. That was the meeting that we had. Kathy, was there anything else?
I don't recall anything else.
And...
All right, that means we'll hang on to gavel, curriculum and instruction next, and that you Dan?
That's me taking it again.
Of course you have a question.
Good question.
Yeah, I just had a, just out of interest and the public might be interested in knowing if we can reveal any of the conversation that's happening around the long-range planning. What are some of the ideas that are being bounced around, or is that appropriate to do at this time?
Well, I think we can certainly explain that we've been looking at renovations and remodeling of the high school.
Okay.
It's a building that's been in use for quite a few years since, and it needs probably the most updates for the size and growth that we've had over the years. We are also looking at the middle school and actually all the grade schools, but I would say right now the focus has been kind of the high school where we're at.
I have one specific question that came to me recently. Are the locker rooms going to be renovated anytime soon?
That's a, that's a part of the concept that has been worked up at this point in time, Sam.
Okay.
I would add just a little bit more, if I can.
Which locker rooms? Well, locker rooms in both the junior and senior.
The high schools is the, is the particular one that this person was suggesting might require a little help.
So the, the community facility planning committee that we have formulated has met three times now in the last three consecutive months. Actually, the most recent meeting was just last evening, and you know, based on the last night's meeting, the committee has consented to the high school being the primary focus. And when I say primary focus, probably the most substantial recommendations, a substantial overall work to be done on, and we've worked through discussions on some concepts. I, I would summarize, and certainly Dan and Mark, if you want to add more in, and you've been attending the meetings too Kathy, I would say that our career and technology education area has gotten a lot of focus on improving the facilities there considering the number of students that we have participating in our tech ed courses and, and the career opportunities that are there and the need for workers right here in our community in the manufacturing industry, that is a, is a primary focus for upgrades to the facilities. In addition to that, I would point to an expansion of the commons area with a, a new, more secure, safe entry with the relocation of the office where administrative staff is, is at. But as far as expansion of the commons, that also gives us opportunities to just make for a better, more conducive environment for students that are having lunch, more space, more natural lighting, a better serving line for food preparation and distribution. Thirdly, I would point to the, the athletics area, and that runs the gamut of putting a deck with bleacher seating for the pool area, upgrading locker rooms, expanding the fitness center area, looking at the, we need to do changeover with the bleacher system for the main basketball court and the field house, that's another area that's being taken a look at. And then the fourth category that I would, would identify is just renovation in general, and that means trying to make existing classrooms, maybe taking, we have a number of classrooms in the original design of the high school that had these office spaces in between smaller classrooms in a building that was designed to run a modular scheduling. You would have teachers that needed an office space that weren't always teaching classes per se. Were, that's just one example of a renovation on taking some of those office spaces out and making the classrooms larger to better accommodate flex furniture and more flexible learning arrangements within, within the learning space that we have. We're still talking about doing something different with the library area. We want to expand our footprint with, with the art department because we're finding that they, given the number of classes that we offer and the staff that we have, when you look at comparable schools, we don't have as much square footage in that classroom space area or content area as well, and, and the list goes on, goes on from there.
Great.
I mean, even things like, you know, the, the building since the 1993 remodel has been operating under situations, circumstances where the majority of our students have to share lockers because we don't have enough lockers, and from a safety, security standpoint and privacy standpoint, that's not always the best arrangement. So we want to incorporate space within these commons areas that would, would accommodate locker bays with maybe stackable smaller lockers. We don't have as many books and things that kids need to store so that we could have enough lockers for kids to have their own, all, all grade levels. I think right now, Jackson and Jamie, we're about half and half. I think juniors and seniors have their own lockers, but freshmen and sophomores are sharing. If I recall correctly, when I was a teacher in the high school 20 years ago, I think it was only seniors that had their lockers just to themselves, so, and that's just scratching the surface on things that, that we've been talking about. We clearly have a high school building that is now more than 50 years old, and to upgrade things to a better, more modern learning environment for our kids, we feel the need to look, you know, real closely at improving the overall facility and layout of the building for, for better learning opportunities for our kids, so. I don't know if there's more that any of the three of you that have attended the meetings want to add?
I think it's important that everybody understands that this is long-range planning. So I mean, we're looking at stuff that can happen soon, we're looking at things that are going to happen 10, 15, 20 years down the road. So this is our long-range plan, and we're not just looking at the high school. Last night there was a ton of discussion on the middle school, and in our books that we got with our meeting, in the back, we'll be moving into the grade schools like Lincoln, Grant, Madison, Washington, and what upgrades and what things have changed and what we need to do in those buildings also. So it's not just the high school, it's the whole gamut of everything, including this office that we sit in, so.
And I think the key to understand is it's very preliminary yet where we're at.
Right.
It's, it's just squares on a piece of paper, yet there's a lot of discussion to go on.
There was significant amount of discussion on how much space we would need to move the sixth graders to the middle school and move them out of the grade schools because of the, I would say the developmental, they're more developmentally close to the seventh, eighth graders sometimes.
Yeah, I think, you know, in addition to what Mark just noted on this is a long-range plan for multiple years, it's also important to note that a lot of the specific details we're referencing are still in conversation stage.
Sure.
We're still narrowing in on what the, the actual recommendations may look like in, in the end.
That's great, thank you so much. It's just nice to hear that.
It seems true, the more we meet, the more homework we end up wanting.
There's a lot there. I mean, we also talked last evening about scheduling some site visits to some other school districts that have done some recent renovation projects, just to better conceptualize what other parts of the state are, are doing.
Excellent.
And the other thing is, when people contact you about that, you can point out to them these meetings are on the board.
Yeah, they're public meetings.
On the website?
Absolutely.
And that they are welcome to attend.
Right. The, the challenge that, that people find is that our minutes don't share, some people don't have time to go to those meetings, and we don't have video documentation of most of them, so to look at the minutes, as, as you can see, the minutes don't give a lot of details. And, and so that's, that's the, this is coming out of that frustration, that this person is well aware of all of that but can't make the meetings, and has looked at the minutes and was like, I'd really like to know. And that's a particular item of concern that this person has mentioned to me several times, and so that's why, that's why I wrote it up. I hope you're watching.
I can assure you, I can assure you one thing, since I've been on the board, this is one of the most thorough looks to the future that I've seen since probably when they did Washington and Madison School, because last night's meeting really dug into the ground of things. It's like, how much, how much money are we going to be spending on maintenance, you know? To where should you be putting the money, should you stick it here, should we stick it here? And that stuff will be coming now, you know, in the future to what needs to be done, and it's, it's good. And I mean, even just like Kathy said, looking at if we may move the sixth grade to the middle school, what are we going to need for them, you know, so that's part of that long-range planning. We're really getting in depth in this thing, and I think they're doing a very thorough job.
And just correct me if I'm wrong, that this is, this is the committee that has community members on it?
Correct.
And we're getting a real broad-based group of opinions about, about the direction that we need to go with our facilities.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good. Okay. Next time come to the meeting, I'll just say that a two and a half hour meeting, a lot of detail.
Yeah. About this.
Are there snacks? No snacks. No. Come Dale, bring them. Okay, next we'll get into curriculum and instruction committee, which Mark still has to gavel because I'm going to be reporting. Last meeting was June 22, and we covered, old business was learner support, which was paper demo. Paper represents provided, or paper representatives provided a demonstration and answer questions raised by committee members. District will move forward with the supplemental resource for a minimum of two years, beginning with a 22, 23 school year. Professional learning opportunities will be available for staff in the fall, and update will be brought back to a future committee meeting. Just a quick explanation, Kim's here, she could explain it really well, but it's a resource for staff, for students to use, for schoolwork, for tutoring, all sorts of things, anytime of day, 24/7, and it, it looks like a very nice program, so that's kind of just a quick synopsis.
And the nice thing is we can use ESER funds for that, so that's one of the acknowledged uses for the ESER funds.
Correct.
Yeah, for learning recovery.
Yep. New business, we covered annual bullying report, an overview of the report, reporting process was provided, and the data for the 2021, 2022 school year was presented, and that was all we discussed in curriculum, so.
All right.
That's all I have.
And Sam? I know Dan's happy to see you.
I'm not feeling well.
I wanted to tell you this, at one time I was on five committees, so I sat where you are.
So next is policy and legislation, Sam.
And so we met on June 22. It was just Dan and I, and we just had some old business to take care of, which were some second readings on, on several policies that we've, that we have shown, that we've looked over before, had discussion prior, so we just need to bring those forward. I can read them, there are, these are largely recommendations that come from our service called Miola, which is kind of our watchdog to make sure we're keeping things in line with what state statutes, changes in state legislation changes to keep our policy current with that. And about half of them are really required, highly recommended, or strongly advised that we approve. So there are some that are not, they're recommended but not required, but I, I think we agreed as a committee that we ought to just go ahead and take care of all those. I can read through those, or do you like to highlight any specifics?
Well, I just, I want to add to that, Sam, if I can, just a reminder to the board that with the first item, that, that's up for the recommended approval on, on action, you know, and actually for each one of these items, you'll see in board docs, and this is available for public content view, you can see the, a track change version of what is proposed for, for the adjustment, but along with it on the first one, which is under definitions 0100, there's also a summary document that outlines basically a rationale for each one of these on what the, the purpose or reasoning behind the recommendation, and it includes the sort of things that you were just speaking to, like you can see the first one is, is recommended but not required, whereas the second item under the electoral process, you'll see that it very clearly defines that this revision is required to stay compliant with statutory requirements, so you've got a nice blend of explaining item by item, the rationale behind the recommended update.
And that's what I'm looking at right here, if anyone has any specific questions, I'd be referring to that, so. So I would propose that, do we go line by line? We don't have to, I think that there's, it's a lot of the...
I requested to, to go through them item by item, there are some items that I had some questions on.
Okay.
And I was looking at, thinking there might need to be some clarification.
I would ask if you want to bring those up, I can, I can read through them, or we can just, if you want to bring up the ones that you have questions about, so. Do you want to start with the 100s? Let's look at the ones that are 100s.
Well, I think, I guess I would just offer for consideration if you are going to go item by item, and I think this is really your prerogative, Dan, but these come forward on behalf of the committee, so the committee is recommending that these take action. There can be...
We could have some discussion.
Some discussion before a vote is taken on each one, if that's the approach we're going to take. I think you should probably step through them.
Okay, sure, that sounds good.
Yeah, and I'm okay with having a discussion, but I'd like to mine a bunch and vote on them.
Yeah, that's what I would like to suggest, is that, is that I'll, I'll bring forward for approval on behalf of the committee, items B through F, which are definitions, then the electoral process, vacancies, board member code of conduct, and then notice of regular meetings. So is there any discussion? You need to talk about discussion, I don't want, I don't want to take your...
We have a motion by the board, by the committee?
On behalf of the committee. So is there any discussion?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. In the definitions, it doesn't appear as though supervisor is defined, and also there's a section where there's a deletion under school official, and it doesn't really explain why the, why those, those items are being deleted. And the lines that being deleted is a person or company with whom the board has contracted to perform a special task, such as an attorney, auditor, or medical consultant, a contractor, consultant, volunteer, other party to whom the board has outsourced a service otherwise performed by the board, by board employees, example, a therapist, or a parent, or student serving on an official committee, such as a disciplinary or grievance committee, or assisting another school official in performing his or her tasks, including volunteers. So why, is there a reason behind deleting that?
I think there's a number of those that as time has gone on would raise concern to be defining like a consultant, for example, as, as a school official. I think that's where the, and the reference in the green in there of except if otherwise defined by the policy is intended to narrow that down as opposed to making reference to all of those specific examples.
And if you notice, all of those examples are, are outside of being a school official, and so it, it was a little odd to see those there. I think it's wise to, to clarify, if we're defining a school official... I think it's wise to, to clarify, if we're defining a school official, a parent is not a school official. We do not have someone, you know, a person or company with whom they've been contracted for a special task is not a school official. These are, these are actually redundancies and, and concerns about those individuals is found in other policy. We have other policy that, that deals with those officials, that they don't, they don't need to be included whenever we're referring to a school official. It's actually, it's really fine tuning our policy to be accurate, be more accurate.
So if we've designated, or we have outsourced a service that we normally perform, and they're performing it on our behalf, they are not school officials?
You know, it's going to be, as a case by case, I mean, Brian, I'll let you, you pick up on this, it's a case by case situation. Those are not, no, a person or company that has been contracted is not a school official. I mean, I don't think that-
I think if we were in a working relationship with somebody that we wanted to define as such, that would be an example of an exception that they're referring to. I mean, this is saying that unless that's defined, they're not, they're not considered a school official. I mean, we could have somebody that we're contracting with in, in regards that they work in a role more, that's more substantial than a typical contractor, that we might want to have that in a written agreement, or defining their, the contractual service that they're performing for the district. That would be included in that, that description, or that, for the exception.
So what you're saying is that if we do contract something like that out, if we're considering them as, acting as a school official, it would be defined-
That would be defined there in that example, yeah.
Don't think there are any other questions on the definitions then?
Okay, great.
And then I had, let me see.
Well, we're just, we're just working on, we're just, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You want me to go through them?
Well, we got motion with B through F was on.
Yeah, yeah.
B through F was the motion.
So do you have any other concerns on, on B through F? Those are the 100s.
Yeah. This would be D. Is, is this something that, is, this is the, this is the type of election that would be held at a board meeting, correct? As I read it. But are all the people who applied going to be considered? Or how, you know, is that information available to the public as to who's applied and who's being considered? Because it doesn't, it really doesn't say in there.
If you look at B, item B, the board shall seek qualified and interested candidates from the community. No one applies for those positions. If there, if there happens to be a board vacancy that isn't-
So in, in terms of just specifically what the recommended updates are, and again, this, this track version view that we have, as I recall, Jenny, our Miola rep explained that there were some school districts around the state that were experiencing circumstances where they had multiple board resignations at the same time. So they were in an awkward number when it came to the actual voting, and in some circumstances didn't have a majority of board members left over. And that's why the wording was changed away from majority vote, and basically is determined by the remaining board members. That, that's what I recall, why there's a recommended change here specifically.
Well, the reason I'm asking about applications is because it says all applicants are to submit a notice of their interest in writing to the board secretary. So we put out that we're, that there's a position open and we're seeking applicants?
I think you'd take B before you take C, correct?
Yeah.
But I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear in this. I think Kathy, you have a procedural question, not a policy question. You're asking, how would we implement this? You're not questioning the wording of, of the policy. Yeah, and I think-
No, I just, I just want to know, you know, does it need to be made clear what the, what the procedure is, or what the process is, so that when people are looking at it, it's, it's more transparent to the public.
And I, I guess this is just my thought on that. That is something that if you had an interest in, you could refer that to the committee as a, as a separate new edit. I mean, I guess you're asking for, or recommending an edit that's not up for consideration right now. So I think that's more a referral. Or requesting, I mean, if you felt like wanting to have this policy go back to committee. But I really, that, what we're talking about here is, is really at the discretion of board, of the board right now, tonight, whether you want to move forward on, on voting on this or not.
Because in this policy, you know, the actions that something would happen, there would have to apply this, how would those actions happen? And seeing it spelt out a little bit better, I mean, I can see it, you know what I mean?
What I would anticipate would occur is if we had a vacancy, is it would be a discussion topic at a meeting, and you as a board would talk about how to communicate that, or advertise that, or what the application procedures would be, and that would, that would be a determination by that board at that time. I think what I'm hearing you say, Kathy, is, is floating the idea of should that be outlined in detail and put right in the policy, as opposed to making a determination at the time that it occurs?
Pretty much. Because that way, if people are interested, and they, they would know that, it'd be more, a more defined procedure for them. What did they need to submit and?
Right, because are we going out and looking for, for the applicants? Or are we also wanting people to come and apply? You know what I mean?
I would like to ask if any, if, if either Mark or, or Dale recalls a resignation and, and this process being used. I, I'm thinking of one person I know who was-
I know years ago they had one, but I don't know that you may-
Yes, I don't remember the individual person. I don't know if it was a, oh, we had one board member that passed away some years I do remember vaguely a situation where there were applicants, and I remember a meeting at the library where those applicants, in some form or another, got up and stated their case as to why they were applying. But I'm sorry, I don't remember all the details. We have had a situation where we've had to fill, oh boy, I mean, I realize I haven't been a board member forever, but again, before that, my position allowed me to be in on most board meetings and to report out in publications on those board meetings. And I can tell you right now, it hasn't happened often. That's all I, that's all I can remember right now. I, I remember-
So, oh my gosh.
I could even state a name or two, but I'm afraid to for fear I might not be accurate on that. Okay?
I think, I think what I'd like to see is, is, this is D, right?
Correct.
I think I'd like to see D go back-
Yeah.
-to committee. And I think we need to add some detail in here, explaining kind of, to what we would do if that were happening, because if we got it spelt out, then it makes life a lot easier for, whether it's, you know, for any board.
It also makes it easier for applicants.
Yes.
Because they know what they need to, they know what they need to read forward to us.
Okay. Anything else with D, Kathy?
No.
Well, I guess I'll just throw it out there, because right now we have a motion to approve B through F, so I think we either need-
Can I make a motion to amend it?
Right, that's what I was just going to say.
Can, can I just make a motion for separate action on that particular item?
Well, we have, well, we have a motion before the board, so we have to, we need to address that motion, either vote it down or amend it. So, 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 Mark, are you going to?
I would move to amend the motion, take item D out, and have a vote on the rest.
So we're putting forth an emotion, a motion, a motion from the, the committee, on behalf of the policy committee, to approve, is it okay if I just do the items B, C, E, and F?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have a motion? No further discussion?
We need a second.
So we need a second?
Yeah, because I'm, I'm making the motion to amend it.
You made that motion, right, okay.
So I need a second.
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 So we have a second?
I'm sorry, I gotta head my study.
Okay.
Yeah, the second.
No discussion? We're good with the discussion? Any more further discussion? No? Okay, we take roll?
So now, now, now we take a vote on-
The amendment.
I mean amendment.
I mean amendment.
C, E, and F.
We're voting on the amendment.
Amendment first.
Item D.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, take roll.
Okay. Mr. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neve?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Okay. That's been approved. So now we have a motion that's been made for B through F without D.
For A, for-
B, C, E, and F.
Yes.
Okay.
B, C, E, and F. Thank you.
We had a second?
We don't need a second.
No. We don't need a second, so we just need roll.
That's the committee.
We just need roll.
Well, time for discussion first.
If there's any more discussion.
On any of those.
No additional discussion on those.
Okay. And we'll take a roll.
Okay. Mr. Neve?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis?
Yes. Okay, Sam?
Okay. So we're moving, moving on to, I'm going to put the 1000s and the 2000s together, that's four items, G, H, I, and J. That is criminal history, record check, and employee self-reporting requirement, and physical examination, policy 1460, and the first one was 1421. I'll go ahead and read the policy number, that's easier. And then policy number 2210, curriculum development, and policy 2414, human growth and development. So I've put, bring those forward on behalf of the committee for approval by the board.
Okay, so those four have been brought before the committee, or before the board. Any discussion?
There's a reference in here to a citizens advisory committee. This would be on human growth and development. Do we have a citizens advisory committee?
Not one currently in, in place, and I don't know when, I mean, when, do you know offhand, Kim, when we would be out for our next curriculum review in the, in the cycle? I mean, that's something that would be assembled in conjunction with when that next review takes place.
It's a couple of years old before we would review that again, it's with health, so maybe, I don't know, offhand, I think it's a couple of years.
And we, we did talk about that in committee, about whether we need to be, it's, has there ever been, do you, do you recall an advisory committee for, assistance advisory committee for that curriculum?
No. So the last time we did that, we weren't aware that we had to have one, and now that we're aware, we have had discussion about assembling one and getting one together, especially for the next review.
Because you were there. Weren't you there? You were there. We had that discussion, yeah.
Would it make sense to let the public know and maybe put that committee together now, so that they can be looking in advance at some of the different options and things?
Sure. Maybe looking at the-
I think the only thing I would say regarding that, Kathy, if it's something that's as far as two years out, I think it'd be difficult to get a commitment that is, that's going to stay. And I don't know that we want to be putting through, cycling through an inactive committee when we don't. And we have so many other, I mean, we're on a review cycle. You know, I guess my point is putting our, our focus on whatever is up in that particular year. It's just that I thought that I have from just a practicality standpoint.
I think that makes sense, yeah.
Well, I'm thinking that we shouldn't do this at the last minute, though. We should be looking at doing it-
We will do it a year ahead of time. A year ahead of time would be appropriate, but probably not much before that. Actually, but let's defer to Kim. When, when, how, what is-
So the phases of curriculum have different objectives that we do in each year that we do them. So, you know, I probably have to look at where it would best fit to have community members. We have had committee members that were required by state statute, like academic career planning were required to have a community committee. And I want to say it was phase two, as an example, when we were really looking at programming and then what those standards are going to be that we adopt, that would make the most sense, sensible time to have that committee versus, you know, having a committee when we're, like you're saying, right when we're going to the school board, that's going to be too late to have that committee. So I'll have to look at, you know, when, where we are with that review cycle, and when it best fits that committee, but it won't be the year that we come to the board, it would be prior to that.
So would it make sense for you to put that into your, into your reporting process to the board, and let us know when community input would be most effective? You know, when you get your citizens committee put together, if there are things that we're required to have their input on, and we don't get it, is that going to cause problems for our curriculum?
Sure. So you want, you want me to give a good update to CNI when, when that committee is formed?
When the committee is formed, but also, you know, if, if there are things that, that fall within the requirements-
Sure.
That, you know, that we make sure, and what we, you know, I mean, maybe what we do is set up a committee and with subcommittees that just meet with you. I mean, and then you report out on committees.
Right, right. So this committee is a committee that it would involve, you know, just give the example of academic career planning again, so we had student services involved, educators involved, administration involved, and the community members. And so we worked on that curriculum together, and then when we report to the board for CNI, Kathy, I think you were here when we finished up last review, student services review, the reporting, it would entail their information that they provided in that.
Yeah, I think with this policy, you need to be reporting to curriculum, and then curriculum can come back with us as, as we move with everything that's going to happen with it.
Yeah, and I think we got to make sure that we've got, if, if our policy, if our policy requires certain groups or a certain percentage of groups, or the statutes require a certain percentage of groups-
Right.
-to participate, then we need to make sure that we hit those percentages.
Right.
Because I don't, I don't, I mean, it, it just makes sense to, what we need to do. And it also makes the, the process a lot more visible to parents, you know, transparent so that-
And there are various means by which we can and have put communication out, letting parents know that we're assembling this, and interested members of the community could submit their name for consideration, whether it be through newsletters, or posting on our website, or school pages, et cetera. We can get that word out in advance along the lines of the, the timeframe that you're referring to.
Yeah, maybe we do a public service announcement on the radio as well. If they would do something like that, please.
Any more discussion for G through J?
I don't think so.
Okay, here and then we'll take roll.
Okay. Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Ms. Yucitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neve?
Yes. And the last of your list, I believe.
I have one more list, yes. There's a few, there's a few more. And I would like to suggest that we take the 5000s and the 6000s together, and then there are just three more. Can we put the 7000s and the 8000s together? Okay? So on behalf of the-
So K, K, correct?
Yes, one K, yes.
3000, so.
Yes, yes, uh huh, yes. So we'll start, oh, I'm sorry, that's true. Yes, there's one 3000. Thank you.
Did we go through K?
K's part of this group.
It's part of this group.
The next group?
Yes, this coming group, uh huh.
So get K through where?
On behalf of the committee, I will, I would like to put forth items K through V for approval by the board.
Okay, so we have a motion, discussion?
Yeah, I have, I actually have a question that requires clarification. of the language that's added in here is talking about, looking for, that, looking at someone who is supposedly abusing a prescribed or over-the-counter medication.
Are you on K?
Which item are you talking about?
I think I'm on K.
Okay.
Yeah, drug-free workplace.
Thirty-one, twenty-two, drug-free workplace.
Thirty-one, twenty-two is where we're at?
Yeah.
And I guess my concern is, how do you, I mean, do we have any authority to control someone's use of over-the-counter medications? And do we have a definition of what we're calling over-the-counter? Because, you know, if somebody, somebody reports somebody for taking too many aspirin, I mean, it sounds ridiculous, but the way this is worded, they could.
I don't know how, how in legal terms that works, but, you know, for me, it's, it's pretty clear, I mean, if you're taking, if you're taking over-the-counter drugs, but if it's, the assumption is you're abusing the prescription, you know, then the question should arise.
I don't have a problem.
But I don't know how that, how that all works.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with, you know, abusive prescription drugs, but do we have a definition of abuse of over-the-counter drugs? Because somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna report somebody for something that's pretty minimal, but it would fall within the confines of this particular restriction, and I don't know if we wanna go there. Maybe we should?
Well, this is saying, whenever possible, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna add, you know, when you read this, it's noting unlawfully possessing, using, distributing, dispensing, or abusing, when we're talking about it being an unlawful situation, I think that we're gonna be in a circumstance where that determination has been made by law enforcement or some governing agency that we're applying or enforcing the policy based upon that determination. I don't think it's necessarily the district, it's not the school district making a determination that it's unlawful by itself.
Well, there's a line in here that says, "Staff members who use or possess over-the-counter medications and take them in accordance with the recommended dosage shall not be deemed in violation of this policy."
Correct.
Doesn't say anything about criminal or anything like that, and my concern is, there's, I mean, there's everything from Mylanta to aspirin to all kinds of different over-the-counter medications, that if someone decides that they think somebody's abusing them, they're gonna report them, and I don't know if we wanna go there. I mean, maybe we should, maybe we should talk to our legal counsel and get some input memo.
Well, legal counsel's involved in reviewing, I mean, there are school attorneys that review all of these policies that were, that come forward from Neola, they wouldn't have gotten to this level if they weren't reviewed by school law attorneys already.
The problem is, is over-the-counter medications are not illegal.
Well, I think that's circumstantial to whatever specific incident that we're dealing with, and, you know, what I was reading from before, Kathy, specifically item C under the subheading of prohibited acts, and I don't think that a policy of this nature, and obviously there's a policy and then there's how it's enforced or applied, I don't think the district is in a position of going after people for not credible reasons, I think wording of this nature is to help support the administration in the school district, deal with an incident when it does occur, or something happens, to be able to address the matter and have a policy to support taking action, appropriate action. So that's what I mean by, it would be more than just a, one individual making a determination on whether it's unlawful or not, that's really not our place to, to make a unlawful determination of a distribution, for example, but I'm also just trying to imagine a situation where we have somebody, and I'm just gonna use the word dispensing or distributing, that has, I'm thinking of like cough medicine and distributing it where it's being used inappropriately and somebody gets injured or hurt, that's an example of where I think we wanna be in a position where this would support the district to take appropriate action.
And there, I just, I'll offer an example, this was from our previous school district, that there was a cough medicine that had alcohol in it, that got into the hands of kids, that's perfectly over, over the counter, you know, it's a legal item, but it was misused because a staff member brought it to school. So those are situations where clearly if a student is, you know, guzzling cough syrup that they found on the teacher's desk, it, that is a dangerous situation, and so this, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have understood Neola as a great service that gives us good recommendations that have already gone through legal minds, that's, that's why Neola brings stuff to us, they've already done the work of checking this legally to make sure that this is gonna keep us safe, that these policy changes can keep us safe, that's why we use that service.
Well, I understand why we use the service, but that doesn't mean that they aren't always correct, and I think
That's true.
We need to scrutinize some of these things, because, you know, I think we have to be extremely careful and make sure that it's clear what we're calling, I mean, because I, I think, when you, when you're looking at over-the-counter medications, I think, you know, we should, we should, I think it's gonna get, I think it could get abused significantly, especially if someone is, is
What, what could be abused?
The, the use of, the use of over-the-counter medication, saying somebody's abusing an over-the-counter medication, because it's, you, you know, you're doing, you're doing, you can do disciplinary action, including termination, and it's not clear, I mean, it basically, this says that, that the board is prohibiting this, and I think, you know, what is unlawfully possessing, using, distributing, dispensing, or abusing an over-the-counter medication? Do we have a clear definition of this? And how, you know?
What would be the scenario? I'm not disagreeing or agreeing with you, I'm just asking a question. What would be a scenario, let's say, student A has a bunch of Sudafed, and, or a staff member has, and someone, another student or a staff member is concerned because that person seems to be taking a lot more Sudafed than what would be recommended, are you, is that kind of where you're going with this as well?
And this is just staff, this policy only?
Okay, staffer, let's make it staffer, whatever. Again, I'm trying to figure out, let's say, myself as a staff member that would be worried about Mark, who's a staff member, taking too much Sudafed, where would I go with that? Where do I go? What do I do? I don't even understand, do I, do I go to my principal and say, "Mark is taking far too much Sudafed"? I'm just trying to follow the logic of where this goes.
The policy here, you know, I guess to recap a little bit, has two, two subcategories. The first subcategory is, and it very clearly says prohibited acts, and below that it says permitted acts. Obviously prohibited would be an example of an unlawful use, and then it does go on under the subsection permitted use, you read before, Kathy, it does outline that this doesn't apply to appropriate, there are circumstances where there's appropriate use. I guess, you know, I see this similar to any time something has occurred where there's an investigation or a review of an incident, the administration makes a determination, sometimes that involves direct consultation with legal counsel to get a determination, but when a, an action has been taken against an employee, we also have a grievance procedure. So I do not see a scenario where we as an administrative team or a district would take action against a employee predicated on the reason being unlawful act if we didn't have that evidence, because if we didn't have that evidence, the employee could grieve the matter and they easily win the grievance.
And as someone who's on the committee, I'm, I'm read through this again in entirety, and I don't see it, actually, any part of this that I would be concerned with.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that as well, and we looked at this thoroughly, and sometimes policy needs to be stated in the manner that it is to give us latitude, and I think that that's what we have here, we have the latitude under the prohibited acts to cover our bases if we need to. Once again, without circumstances, without a situation, you know, we need to have all of our, all of our bases covered in terms of what could happen, and then permitted acts clearly states protection for, for staff members who are using medications at school, or, or using, using over-the-counter or prescriptions as they need to.
According to the prescribed dosages.
Well, I think that when that cannot be accomplished, any staff member in possession of prescribed and/or over-the-counter medications while at school is responsible for taking appropriate precautions, to assure that the drugs remain in the staff member's possession at all times and are taken only in private and out of students' view, I think, I think we have all the bases covered here, I really do.
Yeah, and I think you gotta leave it right to the
I think we need to leave it as it is, yeah.
Because, I mean, you hear it all the time, and it's not just prescribed medication that these people have done, but it's also the over-the-counter, and you hear about it all the time where they're nailing these people for either giving it to somebody or, you know, and it, and it says unlawful, and at that point, I mean, I believe that the law enforcement would be involved in their determination of what it is, and then, you know, from there on it goes on, so I
Well, I just wanted my concerns addressed, I'm bringing it to your attention, I think it's that the language could create some problems for us.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any further discussion on it, any of these action items?
On the other ones? I think I did, I did have some question regarding the third paragraph under
Which policy?
Policy
Is the number?
N.
Okay, fifty-two fifteen.
Fifty-two fifteen, okay. Missing and absent children. The last paragraph where it says, "The superintendent and/or building principals shall permit entrance into the school a student lacking records or identification as a student, and shall assure that the child remains in the building office area until law enforcement or social services is notified and takes custody. Such a procedure reduces the risk of removal of a missing or absent child from the area before intervention by law enforcement or social services." I guess my concern here is, can we make some better clarification so that if we're letting someone who is, who is a child, but might not be a, a missing or absent child, might be someone who has malicious intent to try and get in the building, doesn't have an identification, is not a student, and how do we, how do we make sure that we secure the, the admission so that we don't end up with an active shooter or something in the school because we've inadvertently allowed them to come in because they appear to be a missing child? I, you know, I, I'm not sure if the language in this is strong enough to, to clarify the next step after they, after we admit them to the building, to secure them, to make sure that they're secured first, or secured at the time that we admit them to the building, because sometimes social services and law enforcement takes a while to get there.
So the, the policy here, I mean, you're, you're talking about a school threat situation, that's not what the intent of the wording or language here is about, this is regarding child protection in missing student situations or missing child situations, and the intent of this as far as the holding until contact or arrival of law enforcement and social services has more to do with protecting a student who's been identified missing, because there are circumstances where a child has been, it's a split parent scenario, and a parent who doesn't have custody has abducted their child and taken them to a whole different location and is trying to enroll them in a school without documentation, that's what this scenario is really about, specifically missing students, that, that subsection, and not related to a school threat situation.
So only, only children who would fall under these two definitions, or like, if there isn't, if there's an active Amber Alert and a, and a child actually fits the description, where we would take these kinds of steps?
Well, when, when we're in an Amber, Amber Alert situation, I think that's a lot more widely known, this is more circumstances where it isn't as, because you could have somebody show up here from halfway across the country with, and that's really what these scenarios typically more, are more accustomed to occur, our kids that we don't have, it's a big difference if it's another, a child coming from another school in-state, and our staff will make a quick phone call and it's like, "Yeah, Suzie is moving," and, and we'll get records sent, versus it's an undocumented student that we don't know where they're coming from, and if staff have suspicions about, that's the scenario, that's what this is referring to, on securing the child until law enforcement is called in to assist.
Okay, so it's not just a kid shows up at the doorstep and we don't let him in?
No, that's not what this is referring to, or, no.
Because it could be interpreted that way, and I just wanna make sure that it's clear that that's not intended for that, it only applies to the, to the children who are the two categories that are defined.
Yeah, and I think, as the title describes, missing and absent children.
Yeah.
But then when you get down to the third paragraph, you know, I can see where this where kinda gets misled, you know, because it sounds like they don't know who the child is, and they're looking for records and they gotta wait, you know what I mean? So that's where I kinda, I kinda got a little bit misled to, I can understand the top part falling down into a dis, and I can see it, and if I think if you take, if we take it, what we're taking out, out and bring it together, I think it'll make sense.
The, the last sentence in that paragraph really is, is critical to be reading in conjunction with the rest, because that really does summarize what we're dealing with, this is to prevent a scenario where a child is, is taken before law enforcement shows up. You know, as it reads here, "Such a procedure reduces the risk of removal of a missing or absent child from the area before intervention by law enforcement or so, or social services." Again, very specific to our school, staff are suspicious that this is a missing child that needs law enforcement intervention.
To facilitate the schools
Right, right, yeah.
To facilitate the school's assistance in child welfare in the event of a, of a missing or absent child that arrives at school.
Okay, any further discussion on N?
I think it probably could have been worded better, but I understand the reason behind it.
Okay, any other discussion on any of the other policy numbers?
Yeah, under O, under promotion from grade four and grade eight, under A on both of them, it says, it goes, "A student shall be promoted from fourth to fifth grade when the student meets the following criteria: the student's score on the fourth grade examination unless the student has been excused from taking the examination." Is there a specific goal score that they have to meet before moving forward? Because it doesn't identify a specific, I mean, if they got, if they took the exam and got zero, they took the exam.
You're specifically looking under the grade four You're specifically looking under the grade four and, and eighth?
Grade four and grade eight, yeah.
Good.
I mean, I assume that there's a threshold that we have, they have to meet in order to move forward.
So, what, what I recall on this is, and you know, Kim, we've talked about this as well, we really do not have specific grade level procedurally criteria in district. This wording is only in here because there is state statute that demands this particular wording that is really frankly a bit outdated and not applicable to most schools. So, that's why it's also left not to a specific number, not to mention that parents have the right to opt out of these examinations anyway. That, that's more reason not to have a specific number in there in the, the references that fall in line with the wording that's here.
Well, unless the student has been excused explains it, but if, you know, if the student scores, if the, you know, if a student, a student takes the examination and scores zero, I mean, are we, we could move him forward?
Well, you have to understand there's other criteria for, if you look at B, C, and D, those are the additional criteria that we use. We, we don't, we don't, we don't look just at a test score in order to do promotion.
I, I understand that, but...
Kim, would you like to address how promotion?
Yeah, sure. So, in practice, we do not have a cut score for students, that we do not promote them to another grade. We have different criteria that we use in problem solving teams. It's very rare that we have a retention. We don't, I know, we kind of, we edited, edited the, this language in here and then realized that we can't because it's written right in state statute. So, that's why it's very vague, but it does give the discretion to the school district, and we do not have a cut score on any one exam for students. Not to mention students opting on a, a state test. We also have kids that, you know, the ACT as an example is a state required assessment, and we do everything we possibly can to assess every student, but some students with currency issues don't test at all, and we don't, we don't knock pass them because they're not on grade or score.
I think the problem is that it says that the student meets the following criteria, and, you know, if, if you have a student who is, is, is done very poorly on the examination and...
Kathy, you'll notice that the criteria...
When you say meets the following criteria and then say the student's score, I think what you should do is the, the, something that the following criteria will be considered when promoting, rather than saying this is, this is, this is the criteria because you've got an undefined criteria there.
I think, I think probably the big discussion on this is that this is in accordance with state statute.
Yeah.
So, we can't, we can't change state statute as a board. We have to follow state statute. So, that's where we have to start.
Back to legislation.
In all honesty, yes, so this, I'll just look at the notes there. This, this revision is required for compliance.
Correct.
But we, we don't have a choice. This is one that we really shouldn't have any discussion about because we don't have a choice. This is, this is state statute.
So, again, to summarize, we as a district don't have a, a practice in place, but there is leftover language in statute. And again, I guess I, especially for people from the public who are, are watching, I want to read from the report back that we have from the Ola says, for this policy, in accordance with state statute, specific criteria for promotion from fourth to fifth grade and from eighth to ninth grade are listed along with the option for additional criteria specified by the district. This revision is required for compliance.
So, is this their specific language, or did we make changes to it?
This is theirs. This is theirs. Actually, we talked to the Neola rep about not doing this, and that's when we were told, you, you gotta have this wording in there as a minimum.
So, this is all done through our state legislation? So, if we got complaints on, we need to go there.
So, can you, can you read the statute for me?
I don't see it, I don't see it listed in the, in the summary statement. It seems like we, we had email communication with Dave, our, our rep on this, on this item, Jenny, because this was one that we had specifically asked about changing from what they had recommended, and I thought we had a communication from him on it. I don't see it in my emails when I'm doing a search right now.
So, I would just like to, just throw out that we, we can't, we can't change this. This, this is the way it needs to be. If you would like to do further research on it to better understand it, then I would suggest that maybe you could do that on your own and we could push this forward.
Well, I think maybe stated a little differently. I would, I would say or recommend that we put it through as is for now. If, if you as a board wanna add criteria, change criteria, be more specific, that's a referral that could be made to the committee to be taken up.
Yeah. And if you want to do further research before doing that, that would be great.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause my concern is, is you're saying they have to meet certain criteria and then you don't define the criteria.
I, yeah, and I, I don't, I don't just, I don't disagree with you, Kathy, on that.
And I mean, how do we avoid, you know, passing students who probably shouldn't be passed?
But based on what criteria, and it's, there's a lot of, I mean, when you take in all the different considerations of the diverse array of children that we have, it's difficult to get black and white. But if that's something that the board wants to take on or entertain, specific criteria, that is something that could be referred to the policy committee.
Okay, and well, any further discussion on any of the policies?
I do have one thing. Kath, just so you understand, we do have a first reading on all this stuff, and, and, you know, there's a lot of stuff come out tonight, a lot more than what I think should probably come out in the second. But, you know, with the first reading, bring some, bring a lot of that stuff forward then, and if we can, also to some of the policy committee members. And, and I mean, it's okay, we got it tonight, but...
I, I attended the meeting, but I was told that I couldn't comment, so.
Well, right, right, but we have, but we already had this as a first reading for the board. So, you, you've had an opportunity to look at this, please.
I, I think what, I think what Mark is saying is that some of this discussion could have happened last month, that first reading, and the suggestions that you're making right there could have been taken to, back to committee to, to work on. Even like the item that was pulled out, I, you know, rather than being in a situation where it was pulled out, the suggested edits could have been voiced by other board members, taken back to committee to work on and flesh out.
Yeah.
Because then at least the, the committee's got a chance to work it all out before it comes to an action. And, and we're always gonna have stuff that's gonna come to action, we're gonna have discussion on, but try to limit what we're doing.
On those? No.
No? So, from K through V, are we ready for a roll call?
Okay. Ms. Gorst?
No.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neath?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Okay, we're done with policy legislation, Sam? Okay, then we'll move on.
Do we have Q through V to go through?
We just did that. That's what we just approved.
Yeah. J through V.
We did, we did K through V.
New business is down to personnel report, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, so, just to explain a little bit, that we did not have in executive session meeting this month, we typically go through the personnel report during executive, and then when it comes to the board taking action, take action on the personnel items in, in the various different categories. So, as it is this month, we do not have, and we did not have any retirements come through in the past month, so there is nothing to take action on for item A under new business. But in item B, under resignations, we did have one resignation request that, that came in. In board docs, under item B, you'll see is where the location of the full personnel report is found. So, you'll see Brett Burns submitted a resignation. He's a music, been a music teacher in the district at the elementary level. So, the administration is recommending approval of the, of the resignation.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, this is not coming through from committee, so I'm just giving a little bit of background.
Okay, just a report.
So, we want to go through like we usually do. Okay, for, for whatever reason, I've been kinda designated over time as the person that reads these. Approval of resignations. We have the approval here. I make a motion as an individual board member, so we will need a second for the resignation, acceptance of the resignation of Brent Burns, a teacher of music at Grant slash Lincoln Washington School. That will need a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? Take roll, Kenny.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan? Wrong line. Mr. Neath?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, yeah, and again, I'm just giving a little bit of background information. Normally, we do this during executive and, and talk a little bit about the, the different categories. So, I'm just doing that to give a little, just to set it up a little bit for the board. We've got obviously a long listing of new personnel because we are in the middle of a busy hiring season. There's a lot of hiring that happens during the summer. So, we've got some positions here that, pretty good listing, recommending filling, vacancies that tie back to resignations, retirements, and transfers. So, I can explain more if, if and when we get to a, a motion in a second.
As an individual board member, I move the approval of the following hiring of new personnel. The first one is interesting, Hopperditzel, the second name. The first one is one I'm having trouble with. Leetha or Lietha. Lietha Hoppin', Hoppin', Hopperditzel, a teacher of special education at Lincoln School, replacing Jenny, Jennifer Teska. Second, Ray Lee Klein, hiring at the school secretary at Madison School, replacing Laura Sausserman. Next, Sean Coburn, a teacher of special education and private school educator at Nasonville, and that is a new position, I believe, that has been approved by the board. Next is Heidi Much or Mooch, teacher of grade six at Nasonville, replacing Matthew Hawley. Continuing, Brittany Peterson, teacher assistant, special education at Lincoln, replacing Annalise Droste or Droste. The hiring of Brent Plata, a teacher of instrumental music at the elementary high school, replacing Andrew Nightner, Neidner. Next is Kara Rank, teacher assistant, special education bus aide. Location would be the Cobus and Bus Company. That's also a recent board approval to add that position. Next is Sarah Rasmussen, teacher for four-year-old kindergarten at Washington School, replacing Bridget Stats or Stotts. Catherine Seibel, teacher of sixth, uh, sixth grade at Madison School, replacing Jason Blots or Blatts. Next is Jenna Seiber or Seber, a school counselor at Madison School, replacing Christie Ruggles. Second to last, Barbara Storant, a teacher of science in high school, at the high school and alternative school, replacing Thomas Brand. And finally, under the, the approval motion for new personnel, Ashley Van Driel, a teacher of art at Lincoln, Madison, and Washington, replacing Bill Geiger. And that, as an individual board member, will need a second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I do. I just got one question. On the teacher assistant, special education busing, that's a part-time position?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, and the, that went through the personnel committee, where the recommendation was to add an, an additional part-time position so that we could have an additional bus, add another route and just make the, pick up the kids quicker and get into school quicker and drop them off quicker at the end of the day.
For efficiencies.
For efficiency. So, reduce ride times for, for our kids.
Okay, any further discussion? And we have a motion, a second. We'll take roll.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neath?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
And the last item?
Yeah, so, we've, for administrative positions, we've had a, a separate category because we have had board members like to vote separately on administrative positions. So, this one's kind of hot off the presses here. We had, the recommendation here, the position is for a new assistant principal at the high school, at Marshville High School. This ties back to Mr. Nickzick's retirement. Mr. Nickzick is retiring. Mr. Jackson Heine, our new Marshville High School principal, is here in, in the audience this evening. So, Mr. Heine was selected and approved by the board to be the next principal. Mr. Heine was in one of the assistant principals previously and had a 12-month contract. Mr. De Felice, assistant principal at Marshville High School, is also here in the audience. Mr. De Felice was in a 10-month contract. He was approved last month to move into the 12-month contract that Mr. Heine was in previously. There's a chain reaction going, going on here that, that we're describing. We just completed a, an interview process yesterday and finalized the decision today on a recommendation for a, a new assistant principal at our school, and that individual happens to be here in the audience this evening as well. I'm, I'm very pleased to recommend to the board that Kim Kohlstedt, who has served as a school counselor at the middle school for a number of years, is the administration's recommendation to be hired for the 10-month assistant principal contract that Mr. De Felice had previously been, been serving in. So, we've gone through an inter, posting an interview process during the summer months. Second round of interviews were held yesterday. We had Mr. Neath and Mr. Ukitis participated in that, in that process. And so, that's, that's where we're at here. So, I just wanted to give all of that background and go from there, unless there's any questions. I don't know if you want to see if there's a motion in a second before some discussion.
I think we'll start with a motion.
Well, we'll start with the motion like we always do, the approval of an administrative appointment of Kim Kohlstad to a 10-month position as assistant principal at the high school. And it says, replacing Jamie De Felice, but I think Ryan just explained, this is a matter of not musical chairs, but having to find another assistant principal since we moved the other one's up a step in the ladder. I make that recommendation as an individual board member for approval. That will need a board second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think the only thing I want to say is congratulations. Welcome to the position, and we're excited for you to take that role.
And the whole team.
Hey, Dan, we should probably congratulate your leader after you take the role.
Should we? Should we? I might rush out of here, though.
Is this a...
Okay, no further discussion, then I take it. We'll take roll.
All right, Mr. Neath?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
You bet.
No, congratulations, Kath.
Okay, next on the list is WIA membership renewal action item.
Yeah, you'll see two here consecutively. The first, starting with the middle school, is, is item D under new business, and then D as in dog, E as in Edgar is the, the second one, specifically for the high school. WIA is a membership organization, and we go through an annual renewal process on participation with the WIA. So, that's what these two items are. They are separate items, so I'd be, start with item D for the middle school.
I will make the motion again as an individual board member. I think that's the correct way to do this, right? Will need a second, to approve the 2022-2023 middle school WIAA membership renewal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take roll.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neath?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Okay, next action item is approval of resolution 66.03 consortium agreements.
And we have another request.
of the 2022, 2023 high school WIA membership renewal. We need a second.
Yeah, yeah, we have a motion. Sam again, second. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, take a roll.
All right, Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Eucaides?
Yes.
Mr. Neav?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Okay, next action item is approval of resolution sixty-six point oh-three consortium agreements.
And we have another request from a area school district to place a student in our program and if there's a, you know, a motion in a second, I can provide a little bit more background.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion? A second?
I would like to put forth as an individual board member, approval of the resolution sixty-six point, uh, oh-three consortium agreements for Project Search and Project Life students.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, okay? Any discussion?
Yeah, just to describe a little bit further that we have a very unique program, um, for students with specific individualized learning needs, um, that's called Project Search. And, um, we do have area school districts that, um, request a contract with us to place, to place students and this is really a good thing for the district because it helps us cover the cost of, of the programming. So we target typically nine students for the program, um, and we have a, a per student rate that is charged as part of the contract. Um, so this is really a good thing in that it's, you know, if you look at the, the contract that is in board docs, it, you know, this is revenue of nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-six cents coming into the school district to help, um, offset costs of, of the program and really it is a benefit to our kids in district as well to help make sure that we're able to offer this on a, on an annual basis. So we certainly, the administration recommends approving of the contract with the, this is the Nielsville School District. You may recall, we had a contract request of this nature with the Stratford School District last month that the board approved.
And Project Search, I said this last time as well, but Project Search and Project Life, those programs have done an excellent job of helping placing students, uh, with, uh, jobs or positions in our community. I don't know if it's appropriate to say this, but I'm going to say it, maybe students that may have challenges that need to go through, that need to go through, but are helped with those challenges by going through these programs, highly successful.
Yeah, good development of life skills, employability skills and it's some of the program that we're certainly very, uh, proud of.
Any further discussion? And we'll take roll, Ken.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Eucaides?
Yes.
Mr. Neav?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Then we have approval of the 2022, 2023 mental health consortium MOUs, which is also an action item.
Yes, so the, the school district, we have our mental health consortium and, um, we have MOU agreements with providers to allow, um, just to, to outline the arrangements that we have with them, to allow them to, um, see students and provide some mental health services to students on, on school property. So that's what these different MOUs represent that are, um, in board docs under item G.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I'll, I put forth a motion to approve, um, the 2022, 2023 mental health consortium, remember, and it's understanding.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Um, if I'm understanding correctly, we actually provide them room in the school with, without charging them for it.
Yeah, and in some cases it's done through, um, like a, a teleappointment where it's done remotely, uh, but we do provide space, a secure, um, private space for the students to be able to, to get the, the services, yes.
So is there a reason why providing them in the school and they're not seeing it?
Because it's more, it's more convenient for families to be able to get that done. Parents don't have to leave work to transport their students to a physical location where the, the clinic is held, um, as that results in students missing less instructional time when they don't have to travel for appointments. So we, we view it as a win-win. Um, it, it also helps ensure that the services continue because sometimes because of that inconvenience alone, um, families will not, um, have their kids attend the appointments and, and students don't get the services that they need.
So these are students that are already being provided services by these providers?
Correct.
And we're just allowing them to have access to them at school?
Yeah, so as far as the, the sessions that they receive and services that they're getting, um, this is done through, in, in most cases, families' health insurance, um, that they have. We do have as part of our mental health consortium program, um, in partnership with the United Way, we do have funds available to help support, uh, families in need who, um, may be uninsured or underinsured. Um, but, uh, you know, again, this is really about helping, um, families, um, be, be certain to help their kids get the, the mental health services that they, that they need.
And this is all being done through the parents, the staff, and nobody can send a student there. That goes through the parents.
Yes, this is all done through parent consent, yes.
To make sure that that's clear, that we don't recommend sending them there.
Any further discussion?
Um, no further discussion.
Okay.
Just wanted clarification.
Then we'll take roll.
Okay. Mr. Eucaides?
Yes.
Mr. Neav?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
And the final action item for this evening is the approval of the annual declaration and parent notice of the district's student academic standards that will be in effect for the 2022, 2023 school year.
Did you say final? Final agenda item?
I said the final action item.
I move to a rule.
A second.
A second, okay. Any discussion?
Well, I, I just want to take the opportunity to explain that this is another, um, one of these mandates, you know, that's governed by state statute, which requires school districts to, um, approve annually their academic standards and I, and, um, most importantly, I want to note, especially for members of the public that are watching, is that this agenda item on board docs in the public content area does include a link to, to our school district website. Um, all of our curriculum and standards are viewable through our, our school district website, so that's what this link provides to show the public, um, to be able to go in and look at, um, all of the detail that, um, we're going through the annual approval of, on here this evening.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Jen, we'll take roll.
Okay, Mr. Neav?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Eucaides?
Yes.
And motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need a second?
Need a second?
I'll second, I'll second.
Now we can all say aye.
All in favor?
Aye. All in favor, aye, okay.